We can begin the recording. Recording's begun. If we could please take our seats. The witching hour has approached. And we'd like to begin our meeting. Commissioner Sorensen, are you in the house? There he is. Okay. And Commissioner McKenzie. Not sure where he is. Okay, we have a call. Okay. So, good evening, everybody, and welcome to City Commission Meeting of June 15, 2021. I'd like to be able to begin tonight with a little discussion as to exactly how we organize our meetings. We'll begin with a pledge and welcoming everybody here to the meeting. And we talk about any changes to the agenda. And then we have presentations. Tonight, there'll be a single presentation. So now I'll be making that presentation. I think three quarters of the room is here for that presentation. So, welcome and thank you for being here. And then after the presentation, we move on to the meeting and we talk about consent agenda items and we start our voting process. So if I could, I'll ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Great, thank you. Please be seated. Great. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Somewhere, but not here yet.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Here.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Here. Thank you so much. A couple of agenda announcements changed in CP2 and CP3. Recommendation section of the memos were amended. And CP4 and CP8, recommendation and resource impact sections of the memos were also amended. R6 and R7, the graphics added throughout Exhibit 2 of the memos. And that's it. So regarding the minutes and the agenda, do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second. Second. Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Not here.
Not present. Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, the, on the, on the corrections, CP7 was recommended for resource impact. The recommendation and resource impact sections of memo were amended.
Well, I said CP7 and CP8. Okay. Is that what it says?
Yes.
Ah, good evening, everybody. Okay. I'm very pleased to be able to present tonight's presentation. And myself and the vice mayor, who's participating remotely, but you can see her lovely face on the screen. We are here to recognize Broward Health and Inter Miami CF for their partnership in the COVID-19 vaccination effort that took place this past year. So there are a few people I would, I would ask if they could come up to the dais and kind of line up over here. As I call your name, I really would appreciate it. And thank you for coming tonight. Nancy Gregoire, Chair of the Board of Commissioners of North Broward Hospital District. Stacy Angier, Vice Chair. Shane Strum, CEO of Broward Health. Alan Goldsmith, COO and EVP of Broward Health. Ashley Boxer, VP of External Affairs. Jennifer Smith, AVP of Corporate Communications. Heather Wolf, Vice President, Ambulatory Services. Aldo Calvo, MD, Medical Director, Ambulatory Services. Heather Havercheck, CEO Broward Health Medical Center. Randy Gross, CEO Broward Health Imperial Point. Garnet Koch, Corporate Director, Safety and Security. Anna Calderon-Randazzo, PhD Administrator, CDT-C. Kemery Emrith, Executive Director of Patient Access. Kathy Salerno, Director of Community Affairs. And Debbie Eldridge, Director of Corporate Administration. And for representing Inter Miami CF, Stephanie Toothaker, Chris Henderson, Eddie Roger, and Jackie Ramos. Are you all here? Wow.
Wow.
These are the stars. I need a microphone. There we are. Thank you. Can you hear me? Great. Did I leave anybody out? So today, we are here just simply to recognize the effort that Broward Health, along with Inter Miami, the effort that they collaborated with in order to make sure that we had a vaccine facility that, that was really a major site. And I have to say, first of all, my hat's off to Shane Strum, who was, who in his previous incarnation, was Chief of Staff for the Governor, who, who helped orchestrate this effort. So thank you, Shane, so much for, for allowing Fort Lauderdale and Inter Miami to be able to have a vaccination site. So thank you. I know you've saved many thousands of lives. Thank you. So on January 12th of this past year, the city of Fort Lauderdale, in partnership with Broward Health and Inter Miami, announced the opening of the vaccination site. The site was opened Monday through Friday, and over 500 vaccinations per day took place. Believe this, from January to May, over 68,000 people were vaccinated. So I know. So two things. Number one, congratulations to all those people who are vaccinated. Number two, if you haven't been vaccinated, shame on you. Please be vaccinated. This is not a political statement. This is a safety tip. It helps people, protects people, and especially protects you in the spread of this virus. So tonight, we, the city of Fort Lauderdale, have the great honor to make a couple of presentations. But before we do that, I'd like to invite Heather Wolf. Heather, where are you? I'd like to say a few words on behalf of Broward Health.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Wolf. I'm the Vice President of the Ambulatory Division at Broward Health. And, you know, today was a lot of reflection for me, right? A year ago today, the world looked like a much different place. And as a healthcare leader and as a nurse, I'm not ashamed to admit that we had a lot of tough days. And we watched our incredible, fearless 10,000 Broward Health employees show up to work every day at our facilities. They put aside their fears, yeah, for their safety, their family. And we were all here for you, and we are very proud of that. But even on the tough days, we had hope. And that hope was the vaccines. And we were waiting. So imagine our relation in December, when we found out that our vaccines were coming. And within a week, the state had vaccines for all of our frontline healthcare workers. And a week after that, we had vaccines for our community. So we opened up a very small but mighty vaccine site at our Broward Corporate Boardroom. Everyone from all over Broward Health came together on December 23rd. And we were excited, you know? We were excited, even if we could just do 100 a day and get it into the arms of the elderly, right? The most at risk. That could start to bring us all hope. And we all needed hope. So we were happy, but we weren't that happy. We wanted to do more. And in stepped the city of Fort Lauderdale. Okay. And I, and so although we're here being honored tonight, all of us need to thank everybody up here and many people in this crowd. So, Mr. Mayor, the amazing city manager and his team, EMS, fire rescue, our police department, and most of all, our brand new friends at the Inter Miami Stadium. And I see Eddie over there. We spent a lot of time together on that security card, didn't we, Eddie? And as Mr. Mayor mentioned, on January 12th, we started vaccinating this community at a mega site at the stadium, right off of Commercial Boulevard. And listen, it was a lot of fun. Because, you know. We got to, you know, we had this thing, and we would ask everybody, you know, I'd find a little old lady, you know, with her walker, and I would say, what are you gonna do? What's the first thing you're gonna do when you get vaccinated? And I was waiting for them to say, I'm gonna hang out with my granddaughter. I'm gonna go see my niece in Nebraska. No, 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 no. They wanted to go have a martini and play Mahjong, okay? And then we all got to laugh. And we needed to laugh. So by the end of this project, and in partnership with all of those stakeholders, the state coming in, they gave us tents, air conditioners, staff when we needed it, anything. Everyone was moving in the right direction. We vaccinated over 67,000 people at that site. And Broward Health, as a system, we vaccinated over 110,000 community members. So I'm very humbled to accept this on behalf of the Broward Health leadership team. Thank you so much. But we couldn't have done anything without everyone in this room. And so thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You know, it really did take a lot of effort. It was, it was a major, you know, effort. I want to thank the Governor's Office, including yourself, but the Governor, you know, using his resources to bring the vaccination to Broward County. That was really, really important to us. And, and now I'd like to introduce Stephanie Toothaker, who's here, who's here. Where is she? Oh. Always got my back.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to just thank Chris Henderson, who's the sporting director, Eddie Roger, who's the head of facilities, and Jackie Ramos, who does PR for Inter Miami, for being here this evening. And I, I want to thank you, Mayor, because the first call that I received was from the mayor, who said, I got a call from the state, and the state would like to set up a vaccination site. And, and so I called Jorge Mas, who's the owner of the team, and Pablo Alvarez, who's the general counsel. And I said, what do you think about this? And then I got a call from Alan Goldsmith, who said Broward Health would really like to be the service provider for the state. And it really was a marriage of many people. It was, it was a partnership between the city, the state, Broward Health, and Inter Miami. And, and that's the reason that we were able to vaccinate together, to together vaccinate all those people. And not for nothing, Chris Lagerblum and Alan Boiloo, who made the, made the contracts happen, and Broward Health. And it was, it was a lot in a short period of time. And, and City of Fort Lauderdale Police were incredible. They helped with all the traffic. And, and really, on behalf of Inter Miami, we were so pleased to be a part of it and to be a part of something so wonderful for the city. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to be your partner.
Thank you so much. And so as a token of our appreciation, we have a small monument that we'd like to present to Inter Miami and one also to Broward Health. Put it on your mantle at home. I really appreciate it. And, you know, it's, it's only through combined efforts that we were able to achieve such great results. COVID has really taught us many lessons. For those that were able to survive this pandemic, we had an opportunity to not only reflect on who we are as a community and how we, we've learned new ways to help one another, but also we, we learned a lot about ourselves. And hopefully, this was a lesson to each and every one of us to, to understand how great we can all be when we need to pitch in to help one another. And I think that's, this is, here's a clear example of how we were able to, to see that lesson and accomplish so much. So again, thank you. It's our city manager, Chris Lagerblum. Thank you so much. And, and Alan Boiloo. I know you were involved as well. So many people on our staff who, who, who made it happen. So I guess, can we, want to take a picture? Okay. What's that? Oh, Heather. Heather, please, would you like to say a few words? This is Vice Mayor Moritas.
Which Heather are we talking about? I think we have three of us total tonight. You talking about me, Mayor?
Want to share a few words? Vice Mayor Moritas would like to share.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yes, your audio froze for a second. I just want to say how thankful I am for Broward Health and Inter Miami. It's such an honor to have them in District One. And I'm thankful for the leadership of Governor Ron DeSantis, Shane Strum, who came back home. You, Mayor, and Chris Lagerblum, and everyone. It's just such an honor to work with you all. I couldn't imagine doing, making decisions on behalf of the city and our residents during this pandemic with a better group. And I'm just so thankful to be, just to be a partner with each and every one of you. I got vaccinated at that site as well. So I'm fully vaccinated, ready to go. And forgive me for not being there in person, but I appreciate each and every one of you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I believe also Chief Kerr, are you here? There you are. Why don't you come up here? Come on. Your department.
Really unsung heroes here. Your department, along with our police department. Where's Chief Flynn? Would you want to come up here? I know you weren't here at that time, but you represent our, our men and women in blue, who really, without your efforts, without your teamwork, working with the National Guard and working with one another, we were able to facilitate what I've often been told was the smoothest vaccination process ever, right? People were in, people were out. And really, Chief, Chief, thank you so much for being a part of this and making this happen. So anyway, who would like to take a picture? Memorialize this moment?
Of course, you're all welcome to stay and for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. Talking about you, Chris. Okay. So moving forward. So moving forward, uh, right now, we're at the point what's called the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to allow the commission to vote for a group of items all at once, uh, and without having to, to vote on them separately. If however, a commissioner chooses to pull one of the items, we'll pull that item and we'll, we'll discuss that item separately and vote on it separately. Member of the public sees an uh, an item on the consent agenda that has not been pulled, you are welcome to speak now on that consent agenda item. And uh, we'll be happy to, to list, you'll be given four, excuse me, three minutes to speak on that agenda item. But first, let's hear if any of the members of the commission uh, would like to pull any consent agenda items and then we'll go from there. So Vice Mayor, do you have any items you want to pull from the consent agenda?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
CM five, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie?
CM one, CM two, CM three, Sierra one. I'm just kidding.
I was like, wow.
That's the spirit.
No more Red Bull for him. So you have none?
That was my Steve Glassman.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sorenson?
None. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so except for CM five, uh, if any member of the public sees a consent agenda item that they would like to speak on, please raise your hand. And uh, and I'd be very happy to entertain your, your presentation tonight. Is any, anybody in the public? Okay, there being none, then uh, I don't think I have anybody. Well, there are, there are people who've signed up. CM one, uh, Ms. Alamany. Is she on the line? Mer- Merissa Alamany?
Everybody's in the room if they're here.
Okay, is, is she here? Ms. Alamany? A L E M A N Y? No? I think this is Daniel Jones. Daniel Jones? Okay, okay. And uh, okay, that's it. All right. So if, Bertha Alamany and Danielle Jones, okay. Okay, so there being no public comment, uh, and we have one item that's been pulled before we get to that item. Someone like to move the rest of the consent agenda? Moved?
Second.
So except for CM five, we are voting on uh, all the consent agenda items. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentell's?
Yes. And all those consent agenda items are now approved. If any of you are here on those items, you are welcome to leave or you're certainly invited to stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay, CM five. Motion approving events for crack of dawn, good morning breakfast brunch and Juneteenth celebration. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Chris, just a couple of questions, because I know that I used to always bring this up and we were doing really well for a while, but the first one, the crack of dawn, that event is actually taking place this Sunday. And I know we've talked about in the past, trying to have a little bit more lead time, especially if folks need to advertise and also for our own purposes. And so I was just wondering why we're just tonight approving a project, I'm sorry, an event for this Sunday. Um, and then my second question is on the second event, the good morning breakfast brunch. That's on Monday morning, July 5th, which is after a big holiday celebration on the beach. And this is on the beach. And I know that we've been having a lot of emails and people concerned with some noise in the city at this present time. I'm just a little concerned, um, especially because it's from the rooftop of the garage, uh, for the folks that have been through a long night already in that area, both across the water and on the beach, that uh, early morning setup at seven AM and then amplified music a couple of hours later. Might be just a little bit much. I just want to know if we have a track ready with this group, but that might be a lot on the morning after a big July 4th celebration in the same location. That's about it for me.
So Commissioner, in response to your, the two questions, the first question, uh, the crack of dawn event, it looks as though we received that application on May 21st of 2021. Um, they did in fact, uh, pay the late fee um, of a thousand dollars as opposed to the normal two hundred dollar application fee for a special event. So it just came to us, to us late. By the time it could work its way through the process, this was the first available agenda for it to appear on. With respect to your second question, I do not, am not aware of any history with that particular group. It certainly would be at the pleasure of the commission if you would want to uh, condition it to amplified music later in the morning as opposed to 10 o'clock. We could uh, make that uh, we could make that amendment. I do not know if there's anybody in the audience representing that applicant, uh, good morning breakfast brunch. But if there is, uh, we could hear from them.
Someone here for the crack of dawn?
Come up, come up, come right up here. Chris, while he's walking up, what's, how late can an applicant apply and still be approved?
Just has to be able to meet our process to, to get to a commission meeting prior to the event happening. So you know, the one, the first one of the, it was in the door in time that we could get it to this agenda. But if it had come in later and we couldn't get it until the July 6th agenda, we would have turned it away.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. That's, to me, it's maybe there, maybe we have a little bit more of a firm deadline to say three weeks before the event or four, just something rather than a moving scale.
Fine with that. But the commission has to be fine with that too, because that's going to cause us to tell people, know who are then going to call you. And we all have to be on the same page if that, if we're going to hold a, a hard deadline.
Well, I, I'm just thinking in terms of making sure that the neighborhoods are all aware of an event happening in their neighborhood, just getting that word out, just, it just seems a little, you know, a little bit of a short timeframe if we just see something on a Tuesday and the event is five days later. Just my own opinion. Uh, again, it's just me not, you know, not enough notice for the neighborhoods and people that might be impacted by traffic or even possibly road closures and especially if it involves amplified music and just a thought that maybe we should look at setting a timeline where nothing can, it has to come to us at least three weeks before like the.
Ask you this, what would, let's say this was going to happen on July 19th. What would we do as a city between now and July 19th that we're, that we're not doing between now and June, June 19th? I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't send out alerts or notices to the neighborhoods. I mean, if this is the only, the only awareness that people would have is to this event is through the events advertisers.
We do keep a city calendar.
Yeah, but I mean, who really looks at that? Well, we are realistic.
I mean, so Mayor, I mean, uh, speaking from area where I am is the HOA presidents are very involved and are watching meetings. And so they, when they hear a meeting, uh, event approved, then they communicate it out to the entire HOA and say, hey, this is happening. Here's where it is. Here's what the impact is going to be. And then people plan accordingly. So that, that's some of the informal communication. So maybe that's the path that gives people more time.
Okay, all right.
Besides that, if you really are looking for quality events in the city, I'm wondering how someone can all of a sudden decide that in, you know, in two weeks, we're going to have a quality event. Doesn't it take some planning or some idea of what you're going to be doing? And don't you want to reach out to the neighborhoods that are involved yourself and introduce yourself and just say, hey, we're doing this in, in your neighborhood and we're on this date? To me, it's just a, it's just something that's a little bit.
Not sure when this application was filed, because where it says date, he put his phone number. Are you Mr. McKenzie?
No, I'm Mr. McKenzie.
You having a party on the beach, Mr.?
I plan to.
I can tell you, I'm not going to be there.
I plan to be there. It's uh, event space and that's what it's there for. That's why we put all those millions of dollars there to bring people to our beach. And I, I agree with the processes, but I think Mr. Thornburg, when we went down this road before, gave us a reason. I don't see him in the room tonight as to uh, why we, 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 we do this and, and we get them at this time. But it was something he told us last time that kind of stopped us from going down this road. So uh, I would love to uh, Ricky, do you have any idea?
It says the days and time the music will be played is Sunday from 11 AM to.
But I think they gave us a reason why they do it this way last time, that we kind of were okay with. And I could be wrong.
Hi, uh, good evening. Enrique Sanchez, Deputy Director. Yeah, if I recall correctly, it was, there was uh, an event that was beneficial to the city and it was within the timeframe. And so we allowed some flexibility in there. So we just added the um, the increased charge for rushing it through.
And in that process, you, is there a process where we get feedback from the community?
Uh, on, on, on the event, no. No. Yeah, yeah, we.
So but this is our standard operating procedure, basically. Except we just rushed it a little bit.
Exactly. We, we try, we try to get them out as, as, as far out as possible.
Okay.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hi there.
My name is Marvin McKenzie. I'm the person in charge of crack of dawn. Uh, this is not my first event of this, at this venue.
Can you just please speak into the mic?
My last event was also at this venue, um, DCL Alexander Park. The reason for the late application is uh, I didn't know that, I wasn't aware that it was open up back to the public to apply for the, for the special events. So that's where I kept my first event. It was a nice event. Everything, everything went smooth. This one is for the fathers this Sunday. So it's pretty much the same event. Not a lot of people, maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred people at most. Um, no road closures. Just a calm event. We were right there before and there was no issues or problems.
Just one question. If you could just tell me the relationship between the original application said nightcap events and now it says Arrogasmic Sense LLC. What's?
Yeah, Arrogasmic Sense is my company also. I do um, make fragaces, candles and stuff like that. Uh, my original LLC, I didn't realize was expired, so I had to switch to my other LLC.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of uh, Mr. McKenzie?
I dare you ask my question.
For what it's worth, I, I'm, this sounds fine to me, but, but Chris, I, I'd, I'd be interested in just kind of exploring this idea of kind of three week deadline or, or, you know, kind of maybe getting feedback from parks or
this has come up multiple times. And I don't know why the message hasn't gotten down through staff, but we've asked for this multiple times.
For having a deadline, right? Yeah, that's what I thought.
And Agro Village events?
Okay, all right. Thanks, yeah. Good.
Thank you.
Good luck, y'all.
All right, someone like to move?
Mayor, I have a question about event two, uh, on the Los Olas Garage rooftop.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Um, again, Chris, this is right after a major day on the beach, July 4th, which is going to go quite late. And this starts setting up at seven AM Monday morning. I've already heard from people that the music really and travels, sound travels from the top of the garage, not just towards the beach, but also across the intercoastal. Um, so I'm just a little concerned about the seven AM setup and if they're going to be testing of that music and also that the amplified music is going to start at 10 AM. Um, that is a holiday right after a big day on the beach. So again, just a consideration, I would actually like to talk about, do we maybe make the music 11 AM instead of the 10 AM on that day, that morning of the holiday? I.
That is perfect.
Is that okay?
That is awesome. Um, the setup is nothing major, so it's just minimal setup, a couple of tables at ten by ten stage at maximum. So no hard hammering, laboring, any loud noise will be there. We don't actually have to test until about 11, 11:30, because it's a Caribbean brunch. People are not going to come at 10 AM or 9 AM. They're going to come 11:30, 12. So that's awesome. You're fine with that. I already spoke with my partners in regards to that. I spoke with the Fort Lauderdale Police Department in regards to the music, um, decibels, at sixty five decibels. So I spoke to Sergeant Atkinson and that's already confirmed. And yeah, we're perfect with um, 11 AM. Maybe if you want 11:30, I'm fine.
That's okay, but I think 11 is wonderful. I thank you for that.
Yes.
The neighbors will appreciate it as well.
And we will monitor the, the.
Because you do understand the day before, the night before, it's going to be quite a big night on the beach.
Definitely.
So I really appreciate your cooperation on that. Um, so we're going to make that at 11 AM, right?
That is correct.
Amplified music.
Safar got a big party going on?
Well, you know, we're always partying, man. Always partying, but thank you for that. I appreciate everybody's cooperation and understanding.
Thank you for allowing me.
Any, have any further comments on that item?
No, and I'd be happy to move it.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentell's?
Yes, and CM five is approved. So now we move over to uh, resolutions, starting with R1, appointment of board, board committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners for each July 6th resolution. We have a reinstatement nomination for code enforcement board Julie Lurie. And that's a consensus appointment nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. For tonight's resolution, Central City Redevelopment Advisor Board, Adam Geller, consensus nomination by Commissioner Glassman. Marine Advisory Board, Deidre Bowling Lewis, nominated by Mayor Trentell's and Bob Dennison, nominated by Mayor Trentell's. Parks Recreation and Beaches Board, Darren Heitner, nominated by Mayor Trentell's and Public Art and Placement Advisor Board, Bonnie Barnett. That's a consensus appointment nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And that rounds it out.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear, uh, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced. The resolution in the city commission and the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here to, made a part here of Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentell's?
Yes, and the uh, resolution is approved. I want to thank all those folks who've agreed to participate on the boards and the committees. Thank you very much for your commitment to our city and for your sacrifice and time making Fort Lauderdale a better place to be. R2, this is a quasi judicial resolution approving a site plan level four development permit, Orton Place LLC, the terraces. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. I just want to begin this process by saying that I'm, I'm going to recuse, recuse myself from this item because I have a pecuniary interest in the outcome. And uh, Commissioner McKenzie will serve as uh, chair of the meeting until the conclusion of this item. So.
Okay, this is a quasi judicial um, um, hearing, a site plan level four development permit amendment. The Orton LLC, the terraces case them a UDP dash A2001 in District Two. Are you going to start out with a presentation or Courtney, how do you want to do this?
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, do we have any disclosures other than um, the mayor's, uh, started with the vice mayor?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner McKenzie. I do have two disclosures. 11/26/18, I met with Courtney Crush, Carlos Rivera and Jorge Garcia. 5/28/21, Courtney Crush, Carlos Lopez, Peter Stromberg, Jorge Garcia and Vivian Rubio. Thank you.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, uh, Acting Mayor McKenzie. I met with uh, council on Wednesday, June 9th at 2 PM. And I also attended a Central Beach Alliance meeting when this item was discussed and voted upon and um, numerous site visits. Thank you.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you. Yes, May 27th, meeting with applicant and council.
I've had meetings also with the applicant and the representatives. Um, having said that, um, I only see the, where are those disclosures? Really, um, Abby Lottman and I think Dan Tegzera and Jorge Garcia and are here for questions only. Am I, am I correct before? Is there anyone else signed up to speak this before we let Courtney start the presentations? No one else? And okay, so we'll start with you, Courtney, with the presentation.
Thank you, Acting Mayor McKenzie. Can you, forgive me, can you all say no?
Can you, forgive me, can you all say no?
There is, how, how long is it going to take you?
I can be as.
Just, no, I don't, just give me a time.
I can be as brief as you would like. I would say five minutes if that.
Oh, perfectly. You're well within my, uh, timeframe.
I'm sorry. They're saying they can't see it.
Yep, we're good.
Uh, good evening. Acting Mayor Commissioners, uh, my name is Courtney Crush. I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner and builder of an approved eighteen unit luxury residential, um, project on Orton Avenue called The Terraces at Orton. Uh, with me this evening, um, are Carlos Lopez, Louis Estrada, Tori Watson, George Garcia with Garcia Stromberg, uh, Jason Crush with Crush Law and Lauren Ramos with Crush Law. Uh, The Terraces at Orton, to remind the commission, um, who considered and approved a project, is, uh, five twenty-seven Orton Avenue on a double lot. The, um, reason we are here before the commission this evening is we have, uh, a proposed amendment which is compliant with the NBRZ zoning regulations and we think is a, uh, superior design in terms of compatibility, in terms of the pedestrian realm, and we are here for the commission's consideration. As you can see from the slide on the screen, essentially what the proposed amendment does is it makes the still eighteen unit tower portion of The Terraces, uh, thinner and taller. Uh, this creates more separation between our low scale neighbors to the north, south, uh, northwest and east of us. This is a context slide showing, um, in the NBRZ and Orton neighborhood, exactly how The Terraces, um, will sit on the property. This is an elevation of The Terraces at Orton. As you can see, it was so named, given the movement, uh, that George and his team incorporated into the design. It has a very low parking podium of, uh, just twenty and twenty-four feet, so very low and in keeping with our, um, neighbors. Uh, you also then, then see on the screen in front of you, um, an outline of the development of significant impact, um, setbacks that are set forth in the NBRZ as that hash line and how The Terraces sits within them. This is the perspective from the south, again, showing, um, the narrow uh, diameter of the, uh, The Terraces at that location. A perspective to share with you, um, again, uh, the NBRZ, uh, DSI set, step backs on the building are called out in blue and the proposed terraces, uh, shown both in context with those step backs and also with our neighbors is shown on the screen. Essentially what the proposed amendment does is again, makes the tower portion where the eighteen units are, um, a thinner building. This from the person's perspective, walking up and down the street and certainly our neighbors to the north and south, uh, removes that, uh, that presence of the building at that location while still maintaining, we think, uh, excellent architectural interest, glass undulation. Um, we also wanted to remind the commission that what does still remain is a commitment to improve and start the beach streetscape in front, so what is called out in blue. Um, our offsite, um, sidewalk landscape swell improvements, which hopefully will continue up and down Orton Ave, and this gives you a perspective of, um, how green, um, the streetscape, the onsite landscaping are. In fact, this is about a twenty-five thousand square foot lot. Um, the coverage of the building is about twelve thousand five hundred square, uh, square feet, so it's a, it's, we think, a well-designed balance and that has not changed. Um, with respect to our neighbors in the area, um, as was mentioned, we have, um, presented to the Central Beach Alliance Board to its membership in January and then to its membership in April. Um, the, there were two residents, um, who spoke in opposition to the project, I think, had also spoken in opposition to the prior project. Um, so the Central Beach Alliance vote, um, was not in favor of the project. Um, I think it was sixty-four to thirty-seven. Um, there were about thirty-five people present. So we took it upon ourselves to do outreach. So since then, we have spoken with the Britannia, um, which is the building across the street. Um, their president has asked for some construction management, pressure washing, cleaning. Um, she distributed the plans to the entire building and reported back to us that she has no comments from her building and appreciates the developer's commitment on the construction management. Similarly, Beach Ridge, which is our neighbor to the west, has a lovely pool and their secretary and treasurer asked us to meet on site and, um, asked us to go to great lengths to try to retain an amazing ficus, which is on our property and, um, our client has committed to, um, trying to prune that back over a long period of time so that that can be maintained. Um, and they've also responded, they're very appreciative. We've also spoken to the owner of the Reef Hotel and Beach Garden Hotel, uh, who are our immediate neighbors to the north and south. Um, they own a lot of hotels in the area that are low scale, um, and I am authorized to share that those immediate neighbors are very supportive of this amendment. And this is just, um, a, uh, picture of the landscaping we also committed to enhance, um, at the location. With that, um, I believe I've, uh, at or exceeded my five minutes. We are all here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, what I would do next is, uh, Abby, if you want to speak, uh, from the public, uh, please come up. I would take it that the others, um, the three are just here for questions, uh, if questions are, are, are asked and, um, just for the record, um, everyone has checked the box that they support, so I can't imagine this being anything but good, Ms. Abby.
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, Acting Mayor, Mayor, uh, Commissioners. Um, uh, just briefly, I wanted to offer my support for this project. I've been, uh, a, uh, a resident of the North Beach Village for, for many years and I'm also, um, uh, on the board of the Friends of North Beach Village and just very excited to see the progress that's happening in the area. Um, this particular project, uh, a trip, double lot, triple address, um, eighteen units, you know, six per, per address, that's about as low a density as you're going to get, um, anywhere. Um, I lived at Surf Club for many years and had to, um, live through all of the construction at, uh, Adagio and at, um, The Escape, and, uh, it was all worth it to see, um, the improvements to the neighborhood. Just like you look at what's happened with, uh, the wave and the improvements that have been made to the street, uh, Paramount and some of the other, um, new buildings in, in the area. It's, it's really, uh, you know, especially from the pedestrian point of view, it's very exciting to see what's happening in North Beach Village and I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. We appreciate that. Um, the others, you sure you don't want to speak? Am I correct? Uh, having said that, I would take a motion from, uh, the days, uh, to close the public hearing so we can give our input.
So moved.
Second.
It's been second. Um, motion has been made and it's, and second, uh, would you call the role clerk?
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Uh, what I would like to do, and I was, uh, if you don't mind, District, uh, Commissioner, I will start with the vice mayor. If there's any questions or input you'd like to give at this time. Am I in order, uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, uh, Commissioner McKenzie. I have gone over this project and I've met with uh, Courtney and I, uh, I really don't have any additional questions at this point, so thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, the District Two Commissioner for this project.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I appreciate it. Um, I too have met with them. I've also spoken to neighbors. I've read letters of support. Um, and, uh, I, I think that is, what's important to note here is what was also said by Abby tonight about the low density for the triple site. Um, and I, I also think it's important to note that for the neighbors, very much surrounding this site, I, I believe that the thinner building, although it's, uh, thirty feet taller, if I'm not mistaken, um, that thirty feet in height, um, will not be noticed as much as the now much wider, uh, space between, much, much greater views of the sky and, uh, the air between. I just think it creates a better, uh, streetscape for the surrounding buildings because it's, it's leaner and it's just not squatter, blocking everything with just that, um, you know, that thirty feet less makes a big difference um, uh, on this site. So I, I support the, uh, the thinner building here.
Thank you, and Commissioner Sorensen?
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you, uh, Courtney and Carlos for working with the neighbors. I think this is a great improvement. It's going to be a great asset, so, uh, thank you. That's it, Acting Mayor.
Oh, this is fantastic. Um, I don't have any comments, uh, in reference to the project. This is a good project. Uh, at this time, I will entertain, um, a resolution to be introduced. Am I correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, you are.
You want to introduce it?
Introduce.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Just, uh, clerk, would you, uh, call the role?
And for the record, Commissioner Glassman, is that the resolution approving?
Yes.
A resolution in the City Commission and the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving amendments to the site plan associated with the approved beach development permit for the residential condominium project located at five twenty-seven Orton Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the North Beach, Beach Residential Area Zoning District to increase the building height from seventy-five feet to a hundred and fifteen feet with associated reduced setback request for eighteen residential units in the Central Beach Regional Activity Center. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Just for the record, I think because the mayor uh, accrues himself, you might want to reflect that I was the acting mayor, so there's no questions in reference to this hearing. Am I correct, Mr. City Manager? Let me, City Attorney?
Yes, that's fine. The minute should also reflect that that was probably the quickest beach discussion we've ever had, which is indic, which is indicative of us wanting to see the mayor return to the seat. Thank you.
So I think you all should request that I do this every time.
Oh, there you go.
Up or down with that. Uh, congratulations and I'm so happy to turn it back to.
Thank you very much.
The people's mayor.
Nice job.
I was actually enjoying sitting back there. Thank you, Commissioner McKenzie. Okay, as we continue, um, just a moment. Okay, moving on to R3, quasi judicial resolution approving a site plan level four development permit in turn of design, Edgewater House Condominium Association, Aviva on the River. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Uh, Vice Mayor, do you have any disclosures?
I do. Four eight twenty-one, Courtney Crush, Brandon Spark and Jean Francois.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, and my apologies, I don't have that date right in front of me, but I did meet with, uh, council. Um, I can get you that date later. And I also have done, uh, a site visit as well.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Met with the representatives, uh, no site visit.
And Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes, met with a council, an applicant several times and many site visits with our girls and rescue dog. Thank you.
All right, we have a few people who signed up to speak and, uh, um, oh, my disclosures. Uh, I have met with the representative.
Mayor, your disclosures, please.
Yeah, I know. My, I've met with the representatives, uh, uh, the applicant as well as their attorney and I've done a couple of site visits. Um, so who's the attorney on this? Oh, that's right. Um, Courtney, do you want to give a five, ten minute presentation on this?
Uh, certainly, Mayor. Didn't trust myself to, uh, no? Oh, yes. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, uh, Commissioners, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Courtney Crush, um, behalf of Ocean Land. Uh, with me this evening is, uh, Jean Francois Roy and Brandon Spurk and as well as our architect, uh, Jean Francois Gervais and our landscape architect, of all of whom are here to answer any questions that you may have. Um, I will be brief, but please, uh, stop me if I'm going too quickly as I, um, share with you both the property and the proposed design of a ninety-six unit residential community, um, on the Edgewater property in our Regional Activity Center just west of the US one tunnel and just east and surrounded by Smoker Park. Uh, the Edgewater property, which, uh, the commission is familiar with, uh, is an L-shaped property, north of Los Olas by the river, as I mentioned, right next to Smoker Park. Um, it is at also just west of the Rio Vista neighborhood and fronts along the Riverwalk. Um, we have been, um, because this property is visible and had a lot of discussion, um, as Jean Francois Roy and Brandon embarked on this process, uh, we know that there are a lot of neighborhoods who use this park, use this property, so we have done a lot of outreach and a lot of listening, both with respect to the proposed residences, proposed uses, um, the enhancements to Smoker Park, um, just wanted to share that, um, with the commission at the outset. Uh, Aviva by the River has also, um, been very carefully designed, um, worked on the architecture to prioritize transparency, active ground floors. What you see in both versions of the architecture is a twenty-two foot tall, clear glass, um, floor that allows, um, both physical and visual connectivity, um, to the property itself and visual connectivity through to Smoker Park. Um, you can see as we've worked with, uh, Lorraine and the design team at DSD, how we were encouraged to, uh, continue to refine the architecture. Uh, we also, as we met with each of you, got feedback on, you know, this location on the river being curved and movement and we, we think we've responded in a way that, um, is architecturally rather striking. Um, the Aviva, uh, site plan has been designed to have, as I shared with you, that active ground floor, but really to, um, encourage and allow the public to walk around and walk through the property. So what you see in grayish brown is our paths, both on the property, that, uh, residents, whether they're in the downtown or Rio Vista can walk up to the building, walk to the river and walk through. The uses that are proposed at the ground floor in that twenty-two foot clear are a, um, uh, neighborhood serving restaurant, a salon and spa and a books and coffee shop, um, all of which will be open to the public. Um, you see in blue also a wellness center that will be for Aviva's, uh, residents. Um, but it also creates that active eyes-on-the-park activity that's both attractive and makes one feel a little bit safe. Um, this is a perspective that, um, of Aviva and again, you see a lot of movement, a lot of, uh, architectural features, including verticality, while this is a seven and eight story proposal. Uh, we are nestled in our downtown, so we tried to strike the appropriate balance. As you can see, we're introducing street trees with color, uh, both indoor and outdoor seating. And again, I can't emphasize enough the, uh, twenty-two foot clear, um, bottom floor, which really hopefully, um, allows that visual connection and makes the residents, the five floors of residents sort of float above. I'll quickly walk around the, uh, building with you so you can see how it will be experienced, um, from the public as they engage. You may recall, right now, the Edgewater has a surface parking lot that has a driveway here, so the northern tip of the. here, so the northern tip of the property changes from, you know, vehicular, uh, eccentric to pedestrian centric, and we think it's a nice enhancement on Smoker Park itself. Uh, we also had the opportunity, as part of our outreach, to do a park walk with some of the downtown civic, New River Landing, La Solis by the River residents, to see what might be beneficial, and how could Smoker Park be further enhanced. This is the fitness center. I'm also gonna share with you some of the enhanced design. I, I am gonna comment, Mayor, that in a lot of these renderings, we have, uh, suppressed the trees, um, from showing, so we can show you some of the design, um, the garage, and also the upper roof element. Similarly, here, you can see, this is three hundred and sixty-degree architecture. Um, this is how it would actually look with the, uh, Smoker Park trees in place. The view from the northwest, and, um, you can see the architectural detail on the garage is included in some of the vertical elements on the building, and it's also actually used for the mechanical screening. The breezeway that I mentioned earlier, uh, going to, uh, from Rio Vista Boulevard through to Smoker Park, since we may have met with some of you, has actually been widened and enhanced, uh, to create a more comfortable and visual connection. And, uh, we also have been, uh, working and sharing with our neighbors and sharing with you as, um, our elected officials, you know, what's an appropriate treatment? How can this look rather special at night? So accent lighting, um, at key locations, we think will make the, uh, property, um, you know, stand out at night and be an enhancement, and hopefully encourage a little more after-dark use of Smoker Park, which I know the city continues to invest in. Um, part of our review, um, included, uh, visiting with or appearing in front of the Historic Preservation Board, um, because of the proximity to, um, Smoker Park. And so, um, part of the consideration that Tricia Logan and the board, um, took into account was, you know, are we able to maintain the oaks that are in Smoker Park? So I just wanted to share with you, um, the canopy that is existing in the park, um, and share with you that, uh, we are retaining, um, the vast majority of the trees in the park. I think there are a couple of mangoes, Australian pines, um, and a couple of palms that are actually in the park, um, that, um, obviously, the Australian pines are invasive. Um, Ocean Land has also gone to the extent of some of the trees that you see on the, um, left side of the screen, um, that are on the property line, trying to prune them back so that they can be retained. Um, so just wanted to share that also with you. And with that, um, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you so much. Before we do that, um, I'd like to invite, uh, there's a couple of people that asked to speak-
Yep.
-do that. Melinda Boker? Melinda, are you here? There you are. Come on up.
Hello, uh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, it's nice to be back in person. Um, so I'm just gonna speak briefly as the president of the Neighborhood Association, um, just to reiterate, um, some of the points that-
It's the Downtown Civic Association.
Uh, yeah, so the Downtown Fort Lauderdale Civic Association. Um, Smoker Park is probably one of our most treasured parks, just given the tree canopy and the natural setting. Um, just wanted to talk about the communication that we did have with, um, both Ocean Land and Court, uh, Crush Law. Uh, we met on three different occasions, to include the walkabout, uh, that Courtney mentioned. Um, we also did have, I'm on the board of New River Landing condo, um, we also did meet with them twice, um, as a board. Um, so overall, um, neither party took a vote, uh, in favor or opposed, but I did just want to briefly share that overall, we've received positive comments from our membership, um, regarding the design of the building and the breezeway and the plaza. Um, we, um, certainly are interested in improvements to Smoker Park that may occur in the future. Um, and basically, I think the, the main questions may be taken up by others, some of the other speakers, just regarding, uh, the valet parking and, um, possibly street parking in the area. Um, but overall, just wanted to give, uh, that overall impression from the position of the neighborhood.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, Michael Goodwin, followed by Leanne Rubo. Is Michael here? Michael Goodwin? Michael? You're okay? Okay, you support, you support it? Okay. And Leanne? Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, it's nice to be back in front of everybody again. Um, my name is Leanne Rubo. I'm here, um, as a member of the Homeowners Association of La Solis by the River. Um, we've met numerous times with both, um, Ocean Land and Courtney Crush. Um, we're very, um, excited about a new project. Um, certainly, we're excited that there should be, or perhaps will be, um, enhancements to our beloved Smoker Park, which, um, we are right up against. As always, there is the concern with a building, um, of this size with ninety, ninety-two or ninety-six units, Courtney, ninety-six units and a hundred and fifteen parking spots, um, is always a concern, because if it's a rental building, there are chances are it's gonna be one in two cars for every unit, and that's definitely not enough parking. Um, we're up against that right now at La Solis by the River, where there's not enough parking, and then, of course, if you put in a beautiful restaurant, which I'm sure everyone's want, will want to go to, and a beautiful park which people will want to go to, and a bookstore that hopefully will also have a lot of traffic, whether foot traffic or not, um, there's going to be an issue about parking, so that's really our concern at this point in time. Otherwise, um, that's the only comment I have today. Thank you for hearing us out.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, the others, I think, oh no, we have, uh, Lorraine O'Neil, is Lorraine here? Hi, Lorraine.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Lorraine O'Neil, and I'm a resident of twenty-two years. I live in Rio Vista, about two blocks away, and I'm out on the Riverwalk every morning, and a lot of the neighbors see me, I walk my dog out there, and one thing I enjoy is our beautiful Riverwalk. I live just two blocks away, and I visit Smoker Park a lot. Smoker Park is a beautiful oasis, it's probably the last natural oasis that we have there on the river. Now, as far as improvements, I don't know how you can improve on that beauty, I really don't. One thing I do every morning, my dog takes me out to a little dock that's out in front of, um, the next development over, and we sit and we enjoy the breeze. If you look at the development right there, there's a point that comes out right across from the salt restaurant, and the breeze comes down the river. And, not that it's not a beautiful building, but it abuts all the way out to where that parking lot is. That parking lot allows the breeze to come down the river. And one thing we've done in Fort Lauderdale continuously is block the east, the breezes that come off of the ocean and down the river. And I don't know if anyone's actually sat out there and enjoyed it in the morning, but we will be blocking all of that. The other thing that we will be blocking is the sunlight to Smoker Park. Right now, there's only a two-story building there, the sun comes over that building probably as early as seven AM, and I don't know about you, but if I'm gonna be, the sun's gonna be blocked from the trees and only allowed to get into the park, probably between noon and two, depending on the time of the year as the earth shifts, I don't think the trees are gonna, um, benefit very much. Those are old trees, they're, one of the mango trees that they're talking about, that if anyone's ever eaten from that mango tree, that's one of the best mango trees in the city, right? It's one of the good ones. Now, if that development cannot abut so far out to block the natural breeze and the natural light that gets to Smoker Park, I think that's something that when we talk about giving away our green space in the city, we really need to consider. You gotta get out there and sit there in the morning, watch the sun come up, watch the breeze come down the river. A restaurant sounds great, but right across the way are all restaurant, are all, uh, little residential places, small homes across, they've built a salt restaurant, I think it's beautiful, but ask all the condo owners, they're complaining nightly about the music that you were just complaining about, Commissioner Glassman, that reverbe, reverberates from these restaurants. I don't know if they're gonna have music, I don't know how late they're gonna be open at night, but blocking that park, blocking the breezes, changing that corner, again, there's only one way in and out of there, it's all coming through Rio Vista, all the building, all the traffic and everything else. I think you really need to consider keeping those elements natural.
Okay, great, thank you so much. I'm just looking at the aerial views, and you're saying that the trees will only have sun between ten and two. There's nothing on the west side of the property, um, there's the park and there's the river, that's south of the building. According to this aerial view, is, are these current aerial views of Courtney? Okay, I don't see anything on the west side, I just see one to the south, and, uh, okay. Uh, and then I have, uh, Jean Francois Gervais. Not to be confused with the, uh, the other Jean Francois. Good evening, sir.
Uh, yes, my name is Jean Francois Gervais. Uh, we are the, uh, architect of the project, we're very proud of the project, and we, uh, I'm available to answer any question you may have.
Okay, great. All right, that concludes, anyone else wanna speak on this matter? No one else has signed up? Uh, anyone have any questions of, uh, Mrs. Crush?
I do, Mayor, just, just one. Thank you. Uh, hi Courtney, how are you?
I'm good, Commissioner Glassman, how are you?
Good, thank you. Um, I'm referring now to the minutes of the Historic Preservation Board of May third, when you came for comment and review. So just help me understand, uh, I'm looking at page nine, fifth paragraph down, uh, and it talks about the tree mitigation plan for Smoker Park. Uh, I believe since this meeting, actually, the, um, New River Landing Condominium is no longer responsible for the maintenance of the park, correct? It's the city now?
That, that's my understanding, I saw an agenda item where I think New River came out and the city came in.
Right, so help me just to understand, though, in terms of what exactly is happening with this tree mitigation plan that's referenced, um, in this particular section?
I'm not sure that anything different happens. We provided the tree dis, tree survey, tree disposition, um, we shared it with New River, um, Landing, but we provided it to City of Fort Lauderdale, to the urban forester, uh, Mark Williams, we also provided it to, um, Broward County, to Peter Burke, who must handle parks for Broward County, they both reviewed it, Mark Williams came out and, uh, did a walk-around to look at viability of trees. So candid, Commissioner, I'm not sure who ultimately, the city or the county, um, I know that Mark Williams spoke to the county, um, administers this plan, I'm assuming both, because everyone seems to be acting in concert and communicating. I, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but-
Well, I, I was just curious, because it says the plan needs to be approved by the city, the county, and then the, the condominium, but the condominium's out of that now, but I didn't know if it was the county and the city, and I was really trying to also find out exactly what is that tree mitigation plan for Smoker Park? Um, what is going to be happening?
The tree mitigation plan for Smoker Park, um, and for the private property, um, proposes to, um, prune certain trees, and that was part of the gra, the colored graphic that I shared, remove certain trees, um, the ones I identified in the park. Um, there's a very large oak that is right at the L, um, the inside, um, so that is to be, um, pruned, retained over a long period of time, and that, those protocols were car, called out as part of that tree mitigation. There's also a large tree on the Edgewater property and also on the La Solis by the river, that, um, that, independent of Smoker Park, uh, we're gonna try to retain at the location or relocate into Smoker Park, so all of those items and notes were, um, put forth by our landscape architect and the city's urban forester, and we're following that, and I think that's part, that's included in the site plan application. So I guess, overall, that is the tree mitigation plan, and again, I, that's been provided to both the city and the county.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Sorenson, it's your district, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you, Courtney, um, several questions here. Um, first, uh, Courtney, if you could talk to us about parking, the parking question was raised, I think is a fair one, so just talk through, you know, the, um, expectation for cars, uh, from residents, and then, you know, business from the restaurants and so forth.
Certainly. Um, with respect to, um, residences, as you know, there's ninety-six units and a hundred and fifteen parking spaces. Uh, Jean Francois believes that, um, Ocean Land can control that its residents, whether they end up being, um, uh, renters, or, as the market continues to involve, um, condominium purchasers, that he can control that in the condominium documents. The intent for the ground-level uses, restaurant included, is that given the number of people already living in the, I mean, you know, a couple thousand people living nearby, that people will walk, but we, um, have talked to a valet operator, um, because we don't wanna have a problem. We, you know, right now, the tenant they're talking to, um, is sort of a farm-to-table restaurant, and we hope everyone walks there, but we don't wanna be a burden to the neighborhood, so we have, um, would be engaging a valet company and leasing somewhere between twenty-five to fifty parking spaces in a nearby garage. It's premature to do that, because if, um, this gets, um, approved, you know, it would then need to go through design, construction drawings, permitting, construction, so it's a couple of years out. Um, but again, the goal, the hope is that this is sort of a microeconomy on the south side of the river that has more amenities, but we are preparing for, um, what if people decide they wanna drive there?
Okay, great, thanks, that, that's helpful to know about the additional leasing options to scale parking. Um, great, next, as, as you know, it's a tight turn there, I mean, it's just very narrow, and you're on top of the tunnel, and so from, uh, emergency services perspective, police, fire, um, you know, I'm happy to ask Chief Kerr to come up, but, but Courtney, from your, I mean, you might be able to answer, from your perspective, walk me through kind of those, those questions.
Um, I'm probably gonna have to defer to the chief, I know when this property was, happily so. Um, uh, I do know, uh, that question had been asked about this property, not this project before, and circulation, I think the chief, uh, testified that circulation was achievable, but I, I can't speak to turning radius.
Chief, last time we-
I think they're doing it today.
We talked about the accessibility being sufficient there on the top of the tunnel for turning radius for ladders and so forth, but-
You know, I don't know that I can really answer that question, I really would have to defer to our code side and the ones that do, when we do the site plans, that always make sure that we do have their proper turning radius, but I think, uh, maybe Anthony can help us out, 'cause he just was commenting to me, too, that, that should be an appropriate turning radius.
Sure.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner, uh, actually, Chief Kerr already said basically what I was gonna say, uh, fire is part of the DRC review process and reviews any amendments as they occur. So the, the, it is a public right-of-way outside of the scope of, of the development. We weren't alerted to any issues with turn, turning movements for the fire trucks, so based on that conclusion, I would say that they can, they can get there.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you, thanks, Chief, thanks, Anthony. Courtney, a few more coming at you. Um, uh, infrastructure, so in the backup, obviously, you have the water sewer, uh, analysis. Um, obviously, infrastructure is vital to, to us as we look at growth and development, and, um, you know, the opportunity for projects to do more than just that, that which- That which is right underneath them. In other words. The willingness to support and improve infrastructure that they will use downstream, as it were. So. One of the components that, um, has been found is the, the water, um, main. Being six inches and then the suggestion to, to upgrade to eight. And not only that, go, go bigger to eight inches, but also I think it's maybe 650 linear feet or so forth. Going south is part of the plan, right? I mean, the, that, that type of kind of systemic improvement.
Yes, that was, that was the recommendation from your public works, um, engineer.
Yeah, 950 feet. So it's going well beyond your, uh, property line, well into kind of south.
Correct. I think it goes down to the next intersection at six.
Great. Um, let me see what else. Uh, what, did you all do a shade study for the trees in Smoker? Like the impact, Lauren, that brought up a fair point about the impact of.
We did a shadow study, um.
Can you please try to speak?
I apologize. Mayor, would you mind if I handed, um, Commissioner Sorensen the, the shadow study?
Vaccinate.
And as I had mentioned, the urban forester was out on the property. Um, he did not express any. Concerns about the viability of the trees based on the height or shadow of the building.
Great, being a completely untalented shade study. Evaluator, I have no idea what I'm looking at, but, uh, I'm.
But it's pretty, it's pretty, right?
Looks pretty and I see shade here, so.
It's what you asked for.
Yes, what's that?
Shadow study.
Shadow study.
SS.
I see shadows on here.
I've had to have gone through like 20 years of beach projects to understand.
Yes, I need to, I need to.
Shadow studies on the.
Will you be my mentor on, on shadow studies?
Yeah. Just, just shadow him, okay?
Just shadow, I will shadow.
Thank you. Um, so Mark Williams felt, felt comfortable. I'm assuming that's who you're talking about.
He made zero comments.
Okay.
Um, I also did want to, um. Comment if, uh, on the, um, location of the building. It, I was going to remind the commission, it is, uh, new commissioner, it, it is 88 feet off the water. I know the city normally in its code looks for 60 feet, um, but we are setback 88 feet from the water. I'm not sure that was clear in some of the perspectives.
Great, which I appreciate that, that improvement. What, uh, last question I have is noise at the restaurant. Talk to me about, yeah.
With, the, the. Um, with all due respect to salt, this is not salt. Um, we, uh, Rio Vista, when we revisited with their board the second time. Indicate it was very important that this was a low level ambient. If there's going to be music, it's going to be, you know, ambient level and that's what's intended. Obviously we didn't get into specifics, but, um, happy to do so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's efficient. And I believe Rio Vista Communities or Civic Association. Didn't they, did they vote on that? Did they? Vote on this project? Did they take a position?
I don't believe so. Um, I, we had shared, I think we went with to them back to their board in May. And had asked Christina Curry, their president, if we should come back in June. They discussed it amongst themselves and said, no, you don't have to come back again.
Okay.
They did participate in the DRC meeting, however.
Okay. Good. So Mayor, I mean, you, you, you know well that the history of this site and, uh, the, the project and. To me, this is, um, as a commission, I just think we did the right thing and we've, you know, Courtney and the, the team has been. A good partner, a willing partner on. You know, basically us working together to say what we first saw wasn't the right thing for the, for the neighborhood in the area. And, you know, Courtney and team going back to the drawing board and saying, okay, let's, let's see what can work. And I think the end of the day. We just got a, uh, you know, a product that I think is going to be great. It's going to be a much better fit for the area. So I just, I appreciate. The commission on kind of, you know, walking together through this. I know it's been a little bit long, a little difficult, but I, I just like where we're heading there.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Courtney.
Vice Mayor, did you want to comment in any of this?
Uh, no, thank you, but thank you, Commissioner Sorensen for your leadership on this project.
Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any thoughts? No thoughts. Okay, um, so I concur with, uh, the district commissioner. I, I think it has taken us in the right direction. And certainly it's a less intense development. I would like to see a little bit more, uh. Creativity in the exterior of the building, but, uh, you know what? There's no accounting for taste. So. Uh, we're here to talk about impact on the community. We're here to talk about. How, uh, how to accommodate, you know, the future residents who are looking to move into our area. Uh, I think this does a good job at it and thank you very much for your investment in our community, Mr. Roy and your partners and, uh. And I think that this is definitely one we can, uh, support. So.
And Mayor, you know who else who really was helpful in this and helped make this possible? Alan Boalow, the, our city attorney. So thank you, Alan, for your work.
Well, Alan, you, uh, took the previous, uh.
Alan's been.
Through the courts and.
Very helpful.
You've been successful at, uh, defending the policy of this commission. So we thank you for that.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor.
You can take the rest of the week off.
Yeah.
Starting Friday.
Anyway, would someone like to introduce the resolution? Oh, wait, I need to, uh, move to close public hearing.
So move.
Move.
Second.
The second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, a public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
For the record, this is approving.
Approving.
Interesting to approve. Yes, thank you for the correction.
A resolution, the city commission and the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving the issuance of a site plan level four permit. An alternative design for the development of an eight story mixed use project for 96 residential units. And 7.969 square feet of commercial use to be known as Aviva on the river. Located at 501 Southeast Sixth Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the Regional Activity Center, City Center Zoning District. Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, so the resolution is approved and the, uh, special permit, excuse me, and the, uh, the site plan is now approved. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, good job, Courtney. So R4, resolution approving a request for a special permit to extend construction hours for Broward County Convention Center, subject to requirements. I believe, uh, we understand this has to continue to come back to the commission as they try to renew their special, uh, permit. Uh, Chris, you want to comment on this at all?
No, this was the, just the extension of what we initially, uh, issued. Remember we issued it and said, let's try it for a period of time and see if we get any complaints. And at some point bring it back to us for an extension. This is that point and we have received, uh, no. No significant complaints with the work that the county's done and our recommendation is, is approval.
Okay, anyone have any questions? If not, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
A resolution in the city commission and the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida authorizing the approval of a. Special permit to extend construction hours for the Broward County Convention Center. Subject to requirements is section 17 dash 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells.
Yes, and the resolution is now approved. Uh, R5. Let me just say that, uh, I am so very proud of whoever, uh, initiated this resolution. It's been a long time coming. This is a resolution approving the secondary street name addition of Davy Boulevard. To Ruben Stacy Memorial Boulevard and between the sections of, uh, Interstate 95 and US 4. I have a couple of people who've signed up to speak. One of our colleagues from City of Parkland, Ken Cutler, are you here? Hey, how are you tonight? Why don't you come up?
Mayor, could I just, uh, take a moment to? Talk about this as Ken's coming up here. I just, um. This has been a, uh, a labor of love led by Commissioner, uh, Ken, um, Cutler. He's been the driving force and. Commissioner McKenzie and I have been playing a supporting role, um, but he, his passion. Mayor for driving this through, for engaging with amazing family of Ruben Stacy, the stakeholders across, you know, South Florida. Uh, has been amazing. So, um, I just, I give thanks, Mayor, for, uh. Ken's perseverance and commitment to honoring a horrific. Atrocity, um, that happened here in, in the city of Fort Lauderdale and for. Um, working to address it and educate. So that, uh, some horror like this would, would never happen again. So thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ben. I really appreciate your kind words. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Ken Cutler. I am a Commissioner in the City of Parkland. I am also the official historical researcher for the Parkland Historical Society. I'm a practicing attorney for the last 35 years locally. And now with the law firm of Cutler Raider, uh, a firm in Coral Springs, uh, of which I am a founder. Uh, I was born and raised in Broward County and I went to elementary, middle and high school here and law school also in Broward County. In January 2018, while doing some, uh, Parkland research, I came across the tragic story of Ruben Stacy. A 29-year-old resident of Fort Lauderdale, he was a husband, a father and an employed local laborer. He was black and he was lynched and shot. On July 19th, 1935, right here in Broward County off of Davy Boulevard. He was not protected by the law. He was not given a fair and impartial trial. He did not receive justice in our county. You know this story. It's laid out in your agenda packet. It's the history of this city. Unfortunately, it is not the only such story. Too many times in our past and even in our recent history, we have been faced with a specter of social injustice. I personally have never heard of the Ruben Stacy incident before doing my research as it took place in Broward County. None of my teachers in any of the local schools I attended ever spoke of it. After learning of this event and after having seen the power of change brought on by Parkland's children after the tragedy at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. I felt it necessary to do something to recognize the injustice of what was done to Mr. Stacy. In that effort, I had been joined by a number of amazing community members to form a coalition to raise awareness of this injustice in our community. And to coordinate efforts with the Equal Justice Initiative. Some, like Roberto Fernandez, teacher and historian in residence at the History of Fort Lauderdale. Had already collected soil from the Woodlawn Cemetery where Mr. Stacy was buried with a group of students. To be displayed at the EJI's Museum in Alabama. We are working in that regard to also bring a historical marker here to memorialize Mr. Stacy. And continue to open a dialogue about social injustice. It was suggested to me by former Miami Dade County Judge Scott Silverman that we think bigger. What about renaming Davy Boulevard after Mr. Stacy, he said to me. With this idea, I reached out to the mayor and he connected me with Commissioner Sorensen. I want to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Sorensen and McKenzie. For spearheading the request for Fort Lauderdale to rename a portion of Davy Boulevard for Mr. Stacy. That name will be the Ruben Stacy Memorial Boulevard. And I want to thank this entire, uh, commission for its consideration in doing this. It takes courage and a commitment to justice to make change. Having a dialogue about racial inequality and social injustice can be difficult. But prompting such dialogues, encouraging and engaging in actions that facilitate those dialogues are critical. As Kwame Christian, a legal analyst at the Kirwin Institute for the Study of Race and Ethnicity points out. The reason why these conversations are so difficult is because they are deeply emotional. Thoughtful dialogue can acknowledge differences of perspective while inviting empathy. Questions that lead to conversation and a resolve to jointly solve a problem. That might not be solving systemic racism. But perhaps starting with validating that people's concerns are heard and understood is the beginning of making such a resolution. We face challenges in this country and I hope the people in this room will think about and engage in a meaningful way. By continuing to lead us in opening the door to having those ever important discussions. You all, by casting your votes in favor of making this historic name change, are prompting the dialogue about the social injustices of our past. And encouraging the change. We all need to become better, more enlightened as a community. And for this, I for one am extremely grateful. I wanted to let you know that tomorrow night in Parkland's commission meeting. We will be reading a proclamation in support of this acknowledgement for change by the City of Fort Lauderdale. And I ask that all municipalities in our county do the same. Be the change. Thank you very much. Ken and. Commissioner McKenzie and Sorensen for spearheading this effort. Really appreciate it. And thank you for making the long drive from Parkland. So, uh, we have.
Mayor. Yeah, I'm sorry, just one quick comment. Um, and Chris, only because this is such a historical moment and also we're dealing with something from our history. I just want to make sure that for the record, we just take a look at the cam and. Just clear up the confusion in that third paragraph under background because it really does not make sense and I don't know what the intent was, but. I just think we need to clean up the language. So that will be the official record, um, for this agenda item. Thank you.
And so in response to that, I think what the commissioner is talking about is that first sentence that begins all of the certificate lists his residence as. We just swap out the word, uh, name, uh, in place of residence and I think it reads fine.
Okay.
And that, and that teacher that, uh, the commissioner mentioned, Mr. Fernandez, him and his students, they did an excellent job. We went out. And not only did we collect the, the dirt, uh, but they, um. Clean the stones, clean the cemetery and they often go back, you know, for regular maintenance, uh, of that cemetery. And the story was there because that's supposed to where the, where the body is. It's been told, but to resurrect it to what. We all have done collectively here today. Because of your histor- historian background, um, it piqued your interest. And folks came out, even family members from as far as, I believe it was Thomasville, Ms. Mary, um. Came down about six months ago. We, it was an interesting, uh, meeting we had to just sit and listen to the niece. Uh, talk about, um, her uncle and, and this, this incident, how it impacted the family. So. And that's why I bade to comment, um. You know, I would participate if it's Davy Boulevard. I would participate for going back to the Woodlawn Cemetery, which is closed. Um, it needs to be shared with all. I mean, because it happened here, um, one side of the tracks knew, the other side didn't. Today we all know it and there's no difference in anything else. Anything else, but we turn a deaf ear or blind eye on wrong. And, um. It's good to see that we're moving this county and city forward. Thank you so much.
And. Is Mary Russ Milligan here?
She's right there.
Yeah, she's.
Would you like to come here?
Mary Russ, yeah.
Sign up to speak. So can you please?
And Mayor, I was, I was sharing with Mary Russ. Yeah, come, come on right up here, Mary.
And she's doing a book. She's doing a book. She's doing a movie. I paid for some of her expenses to go up and visit the family again. So we're all in.
Okay, I would like to say good evening to the mayor, vice mayor and commissioners and the community. Ken Cutler, thank you so much for everything that you have done and continue to do. I also want to say special thank you to my family that takes the time out to carry me around as a researcher. I am hearing impaired and mobility impaired. Sometimes I can't even walk. But as a Broward County Trailblazer member, a member of O'Dill Foundation and other. Organizations in our community, I find it necessary to do research and tell these types of stories. Because this was one day in our public schools. We took the black history out of the public schools. Ruben Stacy was in our history books. I go into the community as a, a former educator. I talk to people. They don't know anything about Ruben Stacy. They don't know anything about a lot of crimes, a lot of things that took place in Broward County. I continue to write and do research on those types of stories. And I am speaking here today for the family. I did invite the family here. If there is any here, I'll ask them to stand. But I don't see any faces here. They are watching real live. Oh, thank you. I have been in communications with family members both far and near. So I am looking forward to seeing Davy Boulevard. forward to seeing Davie Boulevard be changed to, or added to, Ruben Stacy Memorial. I'm also looking forward to the TJI monument to come here from Alabama. I think that it belongs here. And for our elected officials, I would like you to know that not only am I in communications with this panel, but in Pablo, Georgia, and Thomasville, too. I have traveled and had meetings with those elected officials, and they're working on that end, too. So I would surely expect Broward County to do due diligence, and let's give Ruben Stacy some justice. We can't bring him back. We can't give the family back Ruben Stacy. I remember listening to one of the stories from his 92-year-old aunt, and she told me about Ruben's mother never had the opportunity to see her son. She never had the opportunity to bury her son. That's what's the most saddest thing I have ever heard. What are we going to do to give this family justice? Thank you all.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Russ.
Mayor, could I just, could I ask if the family members, would y'all like to come up and just introduce yourselves and say hi? Would love to hear from you if you'd like. Come on, come on up.
They're okay?
No, okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for being here. We really appreciate you being here. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, would someone like to introduce--
There's a hand in the back of the room.
Is there a hand in the back? Oh.
Yeah.
Come on down. Thank you.
Is that Kurt? What's up, Mr. Mosley? Long time.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, you want to swear him in?
It's not quasi-- okay, you're good.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Curtis Mosley. I contacted the city about 10 years ago in reference to Ruben Stacy. I had to contact the mayor. The mayor told me to contact the vice mayor. Then he told me to contact Mr. McKenzie. And I'm very disappointed that I contacted Ken, Ken Cutler. He contacted me because I was in, was one of the persons that EJI, Equal Justice Initiative, contacted in reference trying to get Ruben Stacy's recognized here in, in the city of Fort Lauderdale. It's just pathetic that this has taken so long for this to happen. Ken, being a white person, he's, he's done things that black people should have done. Also, the city of Fort Lauderdale is supposed to honor Harriet. They were lynched also. This is a book. I'm quite sure you guys are aware of this book. Anybody aware of it? Anyway, also, National Draft, National Draft Magazine, The Last Slave Ship That Arrived Here in the United States. I was there with Allison Cooper. Did an interview with him. But I'm just happy to be here, to let you guys know that we need to get on the ball and start doing something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak tonight? If not, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, adding Ruben Stacy Memorial Boulevard as the secondary street name to that segment of Davie Boulevard between Interstate 95 and United States Highway 441, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Thank you, Commissioner. Before we go on to R6, I just want to make an announcement. It was brought to my attention just now that the, as you are aware, many of you are aware, the City of Fort Lauderdale undertook a homeless initiative these last few months, trying to take people off the streets, close the encampments, and try to find some of these folks, all of these folks, a way out of homelessness. This initiative was funded by the federal government through one of the federal relief initiatives that, that were passed by Congress. And, and unfortunately, that money is soon to run out. And this afternoon, the Broward County Commission approved an ordinance, a measure, adding $800,000 up to $1.2 million to add, to assist us in this, in this undertaking. So--
Amazing.
Amazing.
This is awesome.
Yeah. So I want to thank the Mayor of Broward County, Steve Geller, each and every member of his commission who voted for it, and Bertha Henry and her staff for their wonderful efforts to work with the City of Fort Lauderdale to continue our efforts to help homeless people find their way out of homelessness, and help us continue this project as we, as we, month after month, are looking for ways to help people in our community. So, just thought we should all know that.
That's awesome. Did we know they were gonna be working on this?
No.
Whoa.
Well, we did a little bit, you know.
Oh, you did.
No, we've, we've actually had some really good discussions, dialogue, and have a really good partnership with the staff at Broward County. And so, we, you know, interacted with them that the federal dollars were likely coming to an end, and they asked us to provide a statement as to what we were doing and how much it costs. And I'm excited to hear from Monica tonight. I don't know if Alan's still behind me or not in the room, but to--
Oh, yeah, no, he left.
That he left.
This should take us through the end of the summer.
Yeah, that they appropriated $800,000, up to potentially a million, too, if we needed it, to continue that program, so.
Well, the good thing about this program is that it's not just finding housing. We have case management--
Intense case management.
Intense case management, trying to, trying to help people with addiction issues, mental illness, and trying to help them in some way to get them, get them out of their condition, their, of their, their homelessness. So, we really, really appreciate this. Thank you.
That's awesome. Yeah, thank you, Brad. And Chris, do we still have Salvation Army being a partner on the meals?
No, we've transitioned to the restaurant in the hotel.
Okay, all right.
We're still providing meals. We just have a different provider.
Great.
About the same cost.
About the same--
Cost.
Cost, okay. Thank you. Bless you.
Okay, R6. This is a resolution accepting the La Solas Boulevard Vision Plan Eastern Corridor, and this is a companion to R7, which is the resolution accepting the La Solas Boulevard Vision Plan Western Corridor. I think Commissioners Glassman pointed it out during our workshop this afternoon, rather articulately, that, that what we do tonight is not, we're not codifying, or we're not saying that everything in each of these plans is what we're going to see as we move forward. This is an attempt to move the process forward, to receive the tender of this vision plan, which we have right here on our desks and in the backup, and to continue the, the discussion in terms of refinement, as we try to find solutions at, at each, each section of La Solas Boulevard. And I just want to thank everybody that, that was involved with this. First of all, Commissioner Glassman and Commissioner Sorenson, thank you so much for your untiring efforts in helping to organize this, our city staff, our neighbors, Coradino Group, and everybody who participated in this. I know that it was, it continues to be a long and tiring, but certainly not futile effort as we are finding solutions to working with everybody to improve La Solas Boulevard. Now, at the last meeting, we, we concluded public hearing, and we closed public hearing. I know a number of people have signed up. There are enough people here that have signed up that will take us past midnight if we, if, if we were to reopen public hearing. I don't know what we would gain by that. If any one of the members of the commission want to speak to that, but my feeling is that I think we, I think the community knows where our minds are, and I think we've heard just about every argument, point of view, that, that addresses issues concerning the vision plan. So, you know, I would encourage us to just make a decision with regard to these resolutions tonight, without opening further debate. I think we heard like two or two and a half hours worth of discussion last time. So what are your thoughts, folks?
Well, we seem to be losing people. Okay. Mayor, I would just simply say that I just want you to explain exactly why to people you are not holding public input on this, so that people understand the process and what happened at the last meeting, and then the workshop today. So, just so people have a clear understanding.
I mean, we, we, we had public hearing at the last meeting. We heard about, we heard quite a few people who spoke on the issues from addressing the La Solas Corridor, from Andrews Avenue to the beach. We heard quite a few difference, different opinions, but I think we drew some sort of consensus. And at the last meeting, we, we came to a consensus with regard to the section between Andrews Avenue and 12th Avenue with, where we, where we, we accepted the recommendations of the vision plan with some modifications that we, we attached to that resolution. And, and during our workshop this afternoon, we spoke to the section between 12th Avenue and the beach. Again, the, the purpose of these items on the agenda tonight are not so much to accept everything that's in there, but to use it as a guidepost going forward and trying to move this plan forward. So in anything that we do tonight, again, there will be further inquiry. There'll be traffic studies done. There'll be, there will be one thing we're going to do, I believe it's in the next year's budget, where we're, we're providing, we're providing funding for two crosswalks on the aisle section of La Solas Boulevard. So, and that includes signalization, includes lights in the road. It doesn't include traffic lights. That's not, not that kind of signalization. So we're getting there, folks. We're getting there. We have a lot of great minds in this city, and we have a lot of ideas that have been presented to us, and we're just trying to make, make as much, bring all these ideas together and to try to, not gonna make everybody happy, but we're certainly gonna do our best to, to make La Solas Boulevard the premier street that it continues to be. So, so are we okay with that?
Yes, and I, no, I appreciate the explanation. Thank you. And again, I did want to reiterate what you said, and what we did discuss this afternoon at the four o'clock workshop, is that we are, we are basically accepting a vision. We are not adopting a plan. And that's a clear distinction that I want to make sure everyone understands, because again, to so many people in the room here today, and again, to Coradino, and to staff, Ben Rogers and his staff, a lot of, a lot of hours, a lot of work, a lot of input, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and a lot of really, really good passion, and a lot of divergence of opinion at times, because we are dealing with a corridor that has five distinct character areas, almost two and a half miles. So of course, not everyone is always going to agree on every single point along the way. But all of this will be fleshed out as we continue. We will be obviously going through a whole process of design, engineering, infrastructure work. All of that language has been added into this plan from the last time we saw this on June 1st. So I'm very happy about the addition of that language in the plan, and it makes it very clear that we are also going to do things in advance of the plan. Like you had mentioned, I was really happy today when Chris told us that we will have money for up to, if we want, up to two crosswalks on La Solas, and we'll also be examining the unsafe conditions of the bridges on the north side. Also, we will be, as Commissioner Sorenson mentioned, studying in depth a lot of traffic issues around 16th, and not just 15th and 16th, but all of that area, so that we really have a very comprehensive look. We're not, we're not moving forward now with anything in particular to that plan, as Commissioner Sorenson had mentioned earlier. But again, so this is a lot of tweaking going forward. It has a lot of engineering. It has a lot of infrastructure work. And again, we are accepting a vision, and it has to start with a vision, and then we will go through the design phase with 30%, 60%, 90%, 100% of a design. All along the way, we will have input, public input, just like we've been doing on the beach with Breakers Avenue. So it's still a long road, and as you mentioned earlier today, Mayor, we will consider also the tunnel aspect of this going forward, and how that will impact all of our work on this project, because that will have a severe, severe impact on the number of vehicles that will travel up and down those two and a half miles from, actually, it'll be longer, because it'll be going from Brightline Station to the beach. So again, that is part of the engineering to come, and I'm very confident we will get there. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that's in the room, or listening, or not, but so many people had such incredible, incredible input on this, so thank you.
Any further comments? Vice Mayor, do you have any further comments?
I do not. I've made them all. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson, do you have any--
Yeah, Mayor, I echo Commissioner Glassman's sentiments, and just a couple of kind of tactical pieces. So Ben Rogers, can you jump up here, please? So, one is Ben is coming up. Mayor, I failed to mention this, and Commissioner McKenzie knows as well, is when we talk about Ruben Stacy, and who made the actual name change possible on this, it's Ben Rogers. He does the lifting. He did amazing work partnering with the county to make that possible. So Ben, thank you, brother. That was all you. That was all you, you know.
He looks like a heavy lift.
He is a heavy lifter. Sometimes commissioners come up with some ideas, but it's actually leaders like Ben that actually do it. So it was all Ben that made that happen.
Well, I'll say this. It was two bins, because when the gentleman got up in the back, Kurt Mosley, I know him.
Yeah.
Been doing them all my life. When he called me, he had been pushed around so much, and then I pushed him again, saying, "You're not gonna put this in Woodlawn again. If it doesn't go on Davie Boulevard, we're wasting our time." So pushed it back, and the persistency, and each time we got pushed back, another person jumped on the bandwagon, because it was that teacher in the cemetery that really stirred it up. And then it got to Parkland, and it got to you, and when you came here and said, "Let's do it on Davie Boulevard", I said, "Now, I will participate," and that's where it should be. So it was a double bin, but he's right. It took a white person to do it, because no one thought it was worthy of going to Davie Boulevard when they kept bringing it to us, Dean, a few years back. Everybody wanted to go to the Woodlawn Cemetery, because it was being driven by somebody else who was an elected official, who's not from here. He wanted to go back to the cemetery to politicize it. I refused to let that happen in my watch. And I pushed it right back in the hands, and look what we have done as a commission, because you grabbed, you took the ball, Ben, and you took it, and you fixed it. And I said, "If we're not gonna put it, you know, on both sides of the street, don't put it on Davie Boulevard. If you're just gonna put it in the black section." So now we have a 2.1 mile stretch where people will know the history of what happened on Davie Boulevard.
Yep, agreed. Okay, so Ben, just a couple questions. I just, as, as Commissioner Glassman well said, this is a vision, and I just wanted to make sure we're memorializing some of the agreements to the vision, to make sure they're kind of captured here. And I'm gonna start, just start with the 12th through 17th Ave, just to make sure we're, it's, it's included in what, what we're talking about going forward. So, number one is a comprehensive study of 12th to 17th on La Solas traffic study.
Yes.
We're good there?
Yes.
Great, okay. As, as a next step. As a next step. And as a no need to delay or waste time, we can do that with haste, right?
Yep. Staff has already reached out and collected a couple quotes to do that data collection analysis, and we'll just have to put the funding with it, move it forward.
Great. Second piece is no taking of land on 15th Ave.
That is the feedback that I heard from the commission today. The current plan had taking on 15th, and what I've heard from the commission is no taking.
Correct. Okay, great. Furthermore, no parking reductions on 12th to 17th Ave.
Correct.
Or even east, or even west.
Or east or west. I'm just, I'm focused on this section.
No parking.
Yeah, yeah. Possible exploration of the updating of a dual left on the La Solas from 15th, which would not involve adding new lanes, taking of land.
Correct. That's the alternate of not, of not widening 15th.
Exploring the intersection at 15th Ave and Broward for possible improvements with the county as, as necessary.
Correct.
Okay, great. So that's it for that section. Then I had one last thing, Commissioner Glassman, I wanted to, I forgot to throw it earlier to you, but I'd been talking with a couple members. We talked to, let's see, Tom and Suzie, and we were talking about the nodes. and we were talking about the nodes. And this may be what you're already thinking, but the nodes have always kind of concerned me a little bit. And so we, as just the three of us, which is just a small, obviously, group, but we came to the agreement of, would love to see fewer nodes and possibly just two nodes in total at, on the, let's see, the east side of Spiro Bridge. Just limiting the number of nodes to that, I don't know if that's something that's interesting.
Side that tonight?
No, we, we, we accepted the concept, so that's where you start. And it may change.
Right, and the language, the language in this section, Commissioner, says up to now. It doesn't, and I believe it says, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, we, we changed it from June 1. It says up to, and we added that we can have those rest areas on both the north and now also on the south so that it's equal. And those, Commissioner, are those, I don't know what your objection is to the nodes, but to me, they're a, a way for someone to look at the water. If they're walking, jogging, pushing a baby carriage, just to sit down, tie a shoelace. I, but I think we've limited it out to what, up to three on each side?
I'd have to.
It says, I'd have to look, but again, that's something like the mayor just said, we can certainly tweak going forward. I think it's just like any little rest area that we have all the way through La Solas. Don't we allow people to sit on a bench in District Four on La Solas?
Do we allow people to sit up? Sure.
We have benches, don't we have rest nodes?
No, he takes the benches out.
Don't we have rest nodes?
That's a red flag question. Don't, don't fall for it.
I think we have rest nodes.
How's that a red flag question?
I don't, he's just trying to.
He's messing with you.
He's just trying to.
Oh, man, loosen up. Loosen up.
He's toy, he's toying with.
It's a suggestion.
Thank you for the suggestion.
And no, no picnic table.
Happy to do it.
Nope, no, as I said at the four o'clock workshop, when you didn't bring this up at four o'clock, as I said at the four o'clock workshop, we've, we've scaled down these rest notes considerably. They used to be overhangs over the water, dredging water, parking area, kayak launch.
See, you're taking my feedback and look what's happening. It keeps getting better.
We've done this, we, we, we've done this over two and a half.
Keep listening, keep listening.
If you need to tie your shoe, please feel welcome to sit down.
Okay, it's also gonna be a function of funding too.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a function of available money, so.
But thank you for the suggestion.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Right, welcome. Thank you.
Keep going, Ben, keep going.
No, 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 he's good.
That's it. It's more good.
BSS, baby.
Teamwork makes a dream work.
You heard that outside, didn't you?
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Good to go.
I did ask the Vice Mayor, right? I, I think I asked you already, yep.
You did.
Okay, so someone like to introduce R six?
Introduce.
It's been introduced.
It would be introduced as amended presumably.
Oh, I forgot that word amended.
As amended.
And are these changes easily made within the report? Because we're gonna need to, I mean, the, the document, because we're gonna need that document for reference.
And you can tie your shoes on the bench.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my understanding is the only change will be no taking of property on 15th.
What's that? Say it again?
The, the city attorney asked for clarification on how easy it is to accept the modifications into the plan. Based on the conversation we had on June 1st, that it would be hard to accept the plan if we had a bunch of modifications to it. My understanding, the only modification that we're moving forward with to the, to the eastern corridor is no taking of property on 15th.
Pretty much, yeah.
Well, I did have a question though, Ben, are we gonna be able to do some things though right away on 15th just to see if we can alleviate the issues by trying to at least using the street that we have to redirect either through striping or arrows or just to try and encourage some of that dual left-hand lane so that we can just get rolling on that?
Yeah, we can, as I, as I.
We just agreed to that.
Okay.
Yeah, because right now, some people really turn left, like me, in the right lane. But if you put a little arrow, I can go straight or left, right?
Correct.
And get no ticket because I don't do it when the police are present.
Especially if you're trying to get to a bench to rest, you can take that left and.
Try to do it when Jackie's not looking.
Correct.
Take a rest.
Okay. I think we're, I think we're done, so could you please call the roll?
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, accepting La Solas Boulevard Vision Plan Eastern Corridor between southeast 12th Avenue and Florida State Road A1A in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and R six is approved. R seven, resolution accepting the La Solas.
You guys can't leave it to the meetings, though, but that's rude.
The La Solas Vision Plan Western Corridor as amended. Any questions with regard to this?
Where you going, Brady?
Okay, please call the roll.
Someone introduce it?
Introduce, introduce.
Forgot that.
A resolution, a resolution in City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale.
I hope you all enjoyed the meeting tonight.
Accepting the La Solas Boulevard Vision Plan Western Corridor between Andrews Avenue and southeast 12th Avenue in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Oh, he's calling your name.
Oh, my name?
He's calling your name.
Who? Where's clerk?
We're calling roll.
And you need a yes, right? You got it, sir.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and R seven is now approved as well, as amended. Thank you, everybody. Good job, good job.
Your computer's still on, what are you doing?
Okay, moving on to PH one, public hearing approving the Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Any questions with regard to this? Would someone like to move the item?
Move.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the item is approved. PH two, public hearing, this is a resolution granting a waiver of limitations on 321 North Birch Road, penthouse three, slip four, for the installation of one no-profile boat lift. How do you get a boat slip on penthouse three? This, I think, is misstated, is Cat, is it Bon Giuzoni? Only for questions, how do you, did I pronounce your name close? Okay, it's hard to read the way it's written here. Okay, so any further questions regarding this? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Please call the roll.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section 47-19.3E of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, granting a waiver of the limitations of ULDR Section 47-19.3C to permit Lee J. Engler as trustee for the Lee J. Engler Qualified Personal Residence Trust and Patty A. Engler as trustee for the Patty A. Engler Qualified Personal Residence Trust, installation of a plus minus 46 feet by 18 feet, plus or minus 828 square foot, one no-profile boat lift extending a maximum of 51 feet from the property line into the inner coastal waterway. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. OFR one, this is an ordinance amending rates and hours for on-off street parking of the Code of Ordinances, establishing a parking cost structure for special events effective August 1st, 2021. Is essentially to reduce the parking rate and implementing a flat fee of $10, no more than $10.
$30.
I'm sorry, $30.
Correct.
Someone like to introduce the.
Introduce.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Section 26-161 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, entitled rates and hours for on and off-street parking to provide a definition of special events parking and to establish a parking rate structure for special events parking and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes. And the last item is OSR one, this is a second reading, quasi-judicial ordinance vacating the right-of-way identified as a 50-foot wide by 209-foot-long roadway between Broward Boulevard and Southwest First Street, known as Southwest 15th Terrace, Lynn and Melody Renee and Christian Garay. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Anyone have any additional disclosures, Vice Mayor?
Nothing additional.
Okay, Commissioners Glassman?
Nothing additional.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Nothing additional.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Nothing additional.
None for me as well. Mr., Mr. Shine, do you have any, just here for questions? Okay, so, I guess I have to move to close public hearing, so someone?
So move.
Second.
Seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Southwest 15th Terrace line adjacent to blocks one and six, amended plat of River Highlands according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 15, page 69 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, located south of Broward Boulevard, north of Southwest First Street, west of Southwest 14th Avenue, and east of the North Fork New River All Said Land Situate Line and being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and that item is now approved, congratulations. Any further business of the commission?
I do have a close call request, sorry.
Damn you.
I'll be quick. I'll be quick.
That's city attorney.
Pursuant to Florida Statute 286.0118A, I'm seeking the advice of the City Commission on a matter titled Rule in Paulette De Haney versus City of Fort Lauderdale during the commission meeting on July 6th, case number 15-019355, Division 21. Should only be about 15 minutes at the most.
Okay. Any further business? Fellows, Vice Mayor, thank you so much for your perseverance today. We've been meeting since.
Woo!
The morning. So it's been a long day.
We did it.
And thank you, Acting Mayor McKenzie today.
Yes.